Chad Wetzel, it's great to finally meet you.
Yes, good to meet you too.
So the name of this show is All Roads Lead to Pullman because I believe we live in a fantastically unique area, you know, being this combination of rural and, you know, really smart higher education and all that. Nobody comes here by accident, right? Right. You got people who have been here for generations and then everybody else came here to start a degree, start a career, you know, some positive reason brought them here. And everyone's got a fascinating story about how they came to the Palouse. And I want to hear from you. What brought you to Whitman County?
Well, long story, ironically, all roads lead to Palouse. When I came to WSU, it was all dirt roads lead to Pullman.
I've heard that before. And honestly, that's a little bit of what we're referencing here.
I wondered about that.
All dirt roads lead to Pullman.
Yeah. So I got out of high school and came over to WSU to go to school and was kind of thinking of vet school for a while and a couple of years, not even a couple of years in, maybe probably the end of the first year, I decided that I was not cut out for that much schooling. Didn't even know if I could pass it at the time. So I was in animal science and continued my degree, graduated in animal science. And I'd gotten interested, I'd been watching horseshoers for a few years and was really interested in what they were doing. So when I graduated, I went to Walla Walla Community. Well, the instructor for the horseshoeing program taught at Walla Walla, but he also had a summer program at his home in Walla Walla. So I went to the summer program and learned to shoe horses.
Oh, wow. Are you originally from the Walla Walla area?
No, actually, I'm from Western Washington, kind of Linwood Everett. People know McElteo. My mom's address was Linwood, but we're closer to McElteo.
Boeing territory.
Yep, yep, exactly. Yeah, we were right in the flight path. So we got to see all kinds of cool planes.
Very cool. So you came out here for school, but that decided not to go that route?
Yeah. Well, I finished school. I did graduate. Yeah, got my degree, bachelor's in in animal science.
No way.
Yeah. Yep. And you know, it's, it's an interesting thing because it's really helpful to shoeing. It's not necessary. You can learn all that stuff otherwise.
For people who don't know, you're a farrier.
Yeah, farrier is the, is the proper, well, I couldn't even say proper term.
You do horseshoes?
Yes, I shoe horses and trim them. But I guess there's three terms for horseshoeing. It's a history thing. If you go back far enough. So originally they were blacksmiths. And usually if someone's calling you a blacksmith, they're generally from Florida more often than not, but usually that lower southeast area. And I don't take offense to any of them. I think that blacksmith is inaccurate because I can't build you a plowsheer.
Well, darn it, that was my next question.
Right, yeah. Nope, can't forge you a plowsheer. Then horse, well, farrier had been around a long time too, because you go back far enough in history and the farrier was who dealt with the horses. They did all the doctoring. It was before veterinarians. So they did things like, you know, bleeding horses, leeches, you know, the old school practices. And then when, when the veterinarians came on the scene, farriers became known as the butchers of horses. It was a derogatory term. And so then you have this horseshoeing and farrier thing and it's kind of competing. So I find it really ironic when people get kind of proud of what they are. Oh, I'm a farrier. And really, you go back far enough, that's a derogatory term.
Interesting. But you embrace it now?
I don't care, farrier, horseshoeer. It depends on the group I'm talking to. If I'm around a lot of horse people, I'll say farrier. But if I'm around people that don't know that, maybe I'll usually say horseshoeer because it's pretty obvious what I do then.
Yeah. I must admit, I don't have really any connection to the equine community, except that in college, I worked for the Appaloosa Horse Club.
Oh, yeah.
At their magazine. And of course, they just left Moscow weeks ago.
Yeah, the, so the museum is still in Moscow, but the association is in Oklahoma.
Yep. So what's the state of, of horse ownership here on the Palouse? I don't see as many as you might expect.
Yeah. So it's, it's changed a lot. So the seventies really was the downturn in horses. That's when farming crashed. A lot of farmers had quite a bit of money tied up in horses. And when that crashed, some farms got lost over. So you don't see quite the drive of horses that you used to, but there's still a ton of them out there. They're just in little pockets all over the place.
Is business good?
Yeah, business is great. Honestly, that's probably been one of the hardest things of becoming a commissioner, is trying to wind down that shoeing business because there's really not enough horseshoers out there. And giving my clients time to find another shoe. It's like any industry. There's, there's people out there. There's not enough good of anything. You know, you got heartbeats, but you need more than a heartbeat in this industry.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's difficult. You know, and some of these clients I've had, I shod for them and now I'm showing for their kids and sometimes their grandkids. So.
How far do you travel? Like, how big of a radius is yours?
So the majority of my business right now is Oaksdale, about as far north as I go. Troy is as far east as I go, but I don't have a ton out there. Mostly Moscow, really. I go down, I don't have anything left in Lewiston anymore. So basically Colton, Uniontown, Genesee. And then out to about La Crosse area-ish for the most part. Now, I do have some clients that are out in like the Cornell area. I started out there in a weird way, but got to know some people out there, started showing for them and word spread. So I've been cutting back on that a lot. I don't really have anything left out there anymore.
But to the Idaho border, Oaksdale, down to the Canyon, you know, out towards La Crosse, that's the four corners of Whitman County.
Right.
And you are currently the sitting county commissioner for your district of Whitman County.
Yeah, District Three, I was appointed. And that was kind of a wild process.
Tell me about that. How did you end up in this role?
So he's got to step back a little ways. And I'm terrible with remembering the exact timing of everything, but Michael Argent was commissioner. They were looking for planning commission members. And I guess you have to step back even further. So my dad was in the fire department. It was something I always wanted to do, volunteer fire department. So when I graduated college, I started on the volunteer fire department to help the community. And, you know, it was interesting to me. So that kind of began my service. And then as you're reading in the paper, and they were talking about the planning commissioners, nine members, three from each district. And they were having a hard time getting people. And they were talking about cutting that number in half-ish. You gotta have an odd number. So I looked at that and I was like, you know, if we want our county to work, we gotta help. And so my wife and I talked about it. She's like, yeah, go ahead. Let's, let's do this. So contacted Michael Argent and he appointed me to the planning commission. And that was, oh gosh, I think I was on the planning commission for about 12 years. And I think I was the chair of the commission for, I don't know, six years maybe, maybe?
What are some of the things that the planning commission covers?
Well, oh gosh. So like the first thing that I, the first thing I remember when I got there, the first issue they were dealing with was a ditch cleaning policy.
Exciting stuff.
Well, yeah, but it'd been written in the sixties. And in general, the idea was that all the dirt should go back in the field that it came from when possible. Sometimes that wasn't possible. And when you read the policy, it was really, really confusing. And they were talking about dirt going in the fields. And if you couldn't put it there, you could put it in a rock pit to help close it. And then they were talking about aggregate and they were talking about more dirt and it just made no sense. And we've, we fought around with that for two or three, I think it was our third meeting, basically, we were still trying to understand what they were getting at. And then all of a sudden I had a stroke of genius that God smiled on me and said, you can understand this, I guess. And it dawned on me that aggregate has more than one definition. It's not just rocks. It's also some total or an addition to. And so they were talking about, you could put, I think it's like 5,000 cubic feet into this rock pit and then you could stockpile another 5,000 cubic feet. Just made no sense. So we cleaned that up. And now it reads fairly simply, so anyone can read it and understand what they're talking about.
So now we have modern best practices for, for ditches.
For ditch cleaning, yes, yes. You know, so that was the first thing. And then, oh gosh, you know, there were some zone changes. I don't know if, if you know this, but there's two different types of counties in Washington State. There's fully planned and partially planned. Whitman County is a partially planned, which is good and bad. The upside to it is that you don't have to, you don't have to have all the regulations that the fully plans want, fully planned counties do. There's, there's a lot more details in your, in your strategic master plan and all that fun stuff. And the partially planned counties though, it's, it's kind of more reactive.
Sure.
Everything is zoned agriculture until somebody says, hey, I'd like to do X, Y, Z. And then the planning commission looks at it and determines whether that's a good fit or not. And then we make a ruling on that. Or they can also go to a hearing examiner if they, if they'd rather go that route. And we've had a few issues go that way.
Okay.
And that's more legal that you have a lawyer that, that's what they do as opposed to a quasi judicial group.
Yeah. So how long you been on, a better commissioner?
Planning commission or?
No, county commissioner.
County commissioner. So I was appointed in March. So, yeah, sorry, I got sidetracked. So went on the planning commission and Mark, Michael Argent, the last election, I kind of got the feeling that that wasn't, he waited a while before he decided to run. He waited till the end. And I kind of got the feeling that he wasn't really interested in doing a second time or third time, I guess. And so my wife and I had kind of talked and we're like, well, you know, I guess maybe the next one will look at it. Cause right then, timing wasn't good for me. And so we move on and what, two and a half years later, he announces that he's resigning and that they're, they're going to appoint a commissioner. So at that point, I talked with my wife and I was like, okay, you know, if we're going to do this, I think this is the time we got to step up and do it right now. And I think against her better judgment, she agreed. She's, she is fully supportive of me, but she wants no part of it, if that makes sense. The politics thing isn't her, sharing her gig. And that's a great, you know, I understand that. I don't blame her some days. But so, yeah, we went through the appointment process and ended up getting appointed and selected by, by Arch Wannick and Tom Handy. So.
Nice. And were you in those circles already just because of the planning commission?
Yeah.
How did they pluck you out and?
Yeah. So the, the way that an appointment works is whatever party that the, so in this case, Michael Argent was a Republican. So the Republican Party nominates three people to go ahead and run. You don't necessarily have to be part of the party. I'm not necessarily a huge person in the Republican Party politics. I like local politics because they're, they're not as divisive as the national. You know, you get a certain amount on both sides that are kind of in the fringes and a little extreme. But in general, most people in Whitman County were, were not that different. And so I had, I'd kind of had an idea that this is something that Mike Argent might do, or that I would, at the next election be running. So I had joined the Republican Party and then the nominations came forward. So that process was, there was a questionnaire. Gosh, I think by the time I got done filling out the questionnaire, it was about five or six pages long. And they had all kinds of questions about, you know, your ideas and plans and how you're going to win an election, all that fun stuff. And ironically, we were looking at that. It's like, you know, everybody should have to fill this out for every election. There's so much information there that, you know, you don't get to really know people in a, in a campaign, I think. So we got through that. Then they go through the process and they have delegates that get to vote on it. It's not, it's not just because you're part of the party. There's a whole political thing there. And it doesn't matter Democrat or Republican, honestly. And so I think when we first started out, there was like 10 people, 10, 12 people that threw their name in the hat. And by the time the questionnaire was done, we were down to five.
Oh, wow.
I think, yeah. And so then we had to make, you know, campaign speeches, talk to the delegates and figure things out. And then they voted and they took the top three and that turned out to be myself and Ron Morgan and, yeah, Ron Morgan and Cody Finch.
Okay.
And then we had to go and have, we did a presentation in front of the Board of County Commissioners in an open public meeting. And then we had individual meetings privately with, with the other two afterwards. So, you know.
Yeah.
So I'd kind of known Art.
So you've done this job now for six months or so.
Yeah.
And you'd like to continue.
Right.
Yes. You're, you're basically running for your own seat.
Yeah.
Right? So what is it about the job of county commissioner that, that makes you go, this is, this is something I want to continue serving it?
Well, you know, part of it is there's a lot of hard decisions coming up. And my history of everything I've done, I don't take the easy way out. There's always a challenge to everything. And it's not, nobody likes to make a tough decision, but somebody has to do it. And I'm okay making those decisions. With my work with Fire District 12, the fire service, horseshoeing, it's all difficult work. And this isn't really that different from it. You know, budgets are a mess right now and we're getting pretty close to, we're coming closer to balancing things out with the, with the budget. We have the wind code right now that the planning commission is working on. And that's going to be a tough decision. After that, once they get that finalized, we still have solar codes, we have battery codes. We still need to look at other energy code systems because, you know, there's a lot of changes coming to the energy sector. And, and Whitman County needs to be in front of that, not behind it.
Yeah. It seems like we've kind of been a little bit behind when it comes to this to the regulatory set of things.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me about that. Like what, what do you see coming down the road? And where do you believe Whitman County needs to be to be ready for this energy transformation that's coming?
So, you know, it's, it's, there's so many things going on in the, in the energy sector right now. One of the, to me, one of the exciting things is these modular nuclear reactors. They're online, they're being tested right now and they're trying to get them ready for production. And nuclear is scary to some people, especially you start getting much older than me and people remember Three Mile Island. And the reality of it is Three Mile Island reacted exactly the way it's supposed to. Something went wrong, it shut down perfectly.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't have loss of life.
Yeah. Eight days before Three Mile Island happened, the movie The China Syndrome came out.
Oh, yes.
Which featured a meltdown that was covered up. And so people read the plot of that movie into what happened at Three Mile Island.
Yeah.
If that movie had never come out, you would have compared Chernobyl and Three Mile Island as an example of the, the problems with the European system.
Yeah.
And the superiority of the American system.
Right.
It would have been, Three Mile Island would have been a success story.
Yes, exactly. And so it is a little bit scary. You know, I was watching some different podcasts and there's a guy, a company, and I can't remember the name of it. They're the only American company that is enriching uranium.
Oh, wow.
And they're looking for a home. And they're looking at Wyoming, Utah, and Washington. And this was a few months ago, so I don't know where they landed. But you know, this is exciting stuff. Yeah, nuclear waste is, has been a problem in the past, but we have this vitrification process they have to turn it into a solid and, and handle it properly is fantastic. And, and you know, with Hanford as our neighbor here, they've learned a lot of lessons there. And I think it's, it's going to be one of the things of the future.
So do you, you see modular nuclear as being a part of Whitman County's future?
I think so. You know, and Washington's a weird place. Washington, a while back, decided that they didn't want to follow the federal efficiency standards. And they changed them. And I believe that they did that because of the green energy idea to get rid of natural gas. So they decided that wind and solar is more efficient than gas. So we, that was their way to get rid of natural gas.
Yeah.
They backed themselves in a corner because once nuclear comes online, or even hydrogen, it's, it's had problems, always been there. I think they're working some details out. Well, I don't know that it's going to be there, but it'll be interesting to follow.
The part that they didn't factor in is dispatchability.
Right.
You know, you can't control when it's sunny out or when it's windy out.
Yes.
And so you end up having to build three or four times the amount of capacity that you need and then put it in diverse areas to be able to replace what a single natural gas plant does.
Right. And then wait till we get one of those nasty winters where we have an inversion for two weeks on end. The wind turbines aren't moving and there's no sunshine.
Yeah. Well, that's something.
You gotta have a backup for that.
They don't realize is that heat waves are usually caused by a stalled front. You know, a heat dome, it's, there's no wind blowing.
Yeah.
So when you need the energy the most, wind lets you down.
Right. Yep. You know, so.
But right, but right now, the public isn't talking about nuclear very much. They're talking about wind and solar. But in Norwood County, the issue is wind.
Wind, yeah. And, but just to go back real quick, the, I think those efficiency standards are going to actually hurt Washington because something will be more efficient than wind and solar, then they'll be forced to get rid of them. But they'll probably change the goalposts again.
Yeah.
That's what we like to do here. Instead of actually trying to be forward thinking and let the, the market decide. They try to pick winners and losers all the time.
Olympia's track record is, is pretty bad on this issue.
Yep.
Yeah. So how does that affect policy today in Whitman County?
So, you know, one of the things that it's, it's been interesting, there's some groups out there and they have, against the wind issue. And I, and I agree with them. But I'm also in a position where I have to be open minded. I can't say we're not going to do anything full stop. That's it. Because if some information comes that actually something looks better than it, than we thought it was, we got to consider it. I think that right now, the ball is in the planning commission's court. And as a.
County planning.
Yeah, county planning commission. So it's a weird relationship. The planning commission makes their recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And the Board of County Commissioners take a hands-off approach to the planning commission, which give them direction and kind of some ideas of what we're looking for. But on the other hand, I don't want to give them my opinion because then why even bother having the board? I already know what my opinion is. I don't need to go that, that route. This is a group of nine people that are from throughout the county that are saying, hey, this is what we're seeing. This is what we'd like to see in that code. Now, the commissioners can accept it, reject it, or modify it. You know, those are the things. So right now, we're really waiting on the planning commission. It's kind of gotten bogged down. And I will fully admit that when I made that transition from the planning commission to the, to the Board of County Commissioners, it threw the planning commission into chaos. And it was foreseeable, it just wasn't addressed. We were already short, let's see, we had six, six members at that time. One of them, his wife took a job back east and he went with her. Go figure. That was a good thing to do. That's what you're supposed to do. So now we're down to five. We still had a quorum. Then I got appointed as commissioner and I had to resign my position. Now we're down to four.
Yeah.
So we no longer had a quorum to do the business. So we replaced over half the board and a new chair in the space of a couple of months.
Yeah.
And you have to expect when you do that, that everyone that made arguments for or against are going to want to make those same arguments again to the board. And that's what really threw things into chaos.
Yeah.
It just kind of delayed things. So now the planning commission is actually in really good shape. We got a full board. They've heard tons of public testimony. And my understanding from, from meetings is that they are ready to do, to get to a code. They just need to come up with something and get it to the planning commission or to the Board of County Commissioners.
What do you, what's your stance on this whole thing? Cause I know that like the planning commission comes up with the code proposal, but the commissioners ultimately get to vote yes or no.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and honestly, I guess the, the big thing is I want to see what's going to come out of there. I have my own ideas. And I guess, to be clear, I think that some of the increased setbacks, there's no problem with those. The, and I pushed while I was on the county, on the planning commission for better decommissioning. Our decommissioning plan was very subpar. It was probably one of the most lax in the nation and it had a lot of holes. But we were being fought by the, by the planning department on that. They didn't want to see changes. And I thought that it really, it was leaving Whitman County in a very bad position that we were going to be holding responsible for cleanup of a lot of stuff if things went wrong. You know, one of the things was, that I was really big on was that their decommissioning started when the project was done. So what happens if from the time they start to before they finish, the company goes bankrupt?
Exactly.
I've been a wildland firefighter for years. And the thing that you do, but when you start an incident, the first thing you have, and we call it mobilization, the first thing you do, when your mobilization starts, you also start a demobilization group. Because if you have people trying, you know, going to this fire and they break down, they got to be able to say, hey, I'm not coming. And you got to kick me out of the system. So same thing with this. You got to have a plan to take it down before it's built.
Sure. It sounds like you have the long view.
Right.
Of, of not just wind in Whitman County, but energy in general.
Right, yeah.
So what do you believe is the right path forward? Do you, do you think, do you believe that wind farms belong in the Cameau Hoot area?
No, I don't think so. And there's two reasons, two main reasons why. One is, so in my opinion, the ultimate goal of, of green energy, we'll call it, because that's the term that I use, although I don't think it's green. Wind and solar is that their idea is they want to remove the dams. So if you remove the dams, we have no more irrigation. Where are you going to farm? All that irrigated ground is, you can't use it for farming anymore. So we're going to depend on dry land farming.
Now, we don't have a lot of irrigation in Whitman County.
We don't, but it's throughout the rest of the state. So if you look through the basin.
Specifically down in like the Ice Harbor area.
Yeah, yeah. You know, Othello, Cornell, Moses Lake, Tri-Cities, that whole, that whole, well, we always call it the basin.
Yeah, it's the Columbia Basin project. It's Bureau of Reclamation and they get their water from.
Right. And it's, it's the northern end of the Great Basin of Nevada, Idaho and all that. It all ties together, but the irrigation is just in our area.
Yeah. The, the Great Basin is, is separate. Great Basin is not in any way connected to Washington, but the Columbia Basin gets its water from Grand Coulee.
Correct.
Which they're not talking about removing. So the irrigation lost from the Snake River actually wouldn't affect central Washington.
Yeah, that is true.
It would affect the Tri-Cities. It would affect that area around Walla Walla.
Right. There's a whole lot of goals and you start one and it's a domino effect, I think.
Oh, you don't have to.
And that's, that's my case. You start.
I'm on team sanity when it comes to keeping the dams.
Yeah. So anyway, you start removing that irrigation, you're losing farm ground. Where are you going to produce your food? You're going to have to do it in dry land areas. Why are we taking up more dry land areas of farming and ruining that to produce an energy system that we can produce cheaper and more efficiently in other sources?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's been my.
And my thought with that is, all you have to do is look at a map of where wind farms are located in the state of Washington.
Right.
And it becomes very clear, there are no wind farms in Western Washington.
No.
And last time I checked, the wind still blows over there.
Right. So it's very clear that Olympia likes to put these lofty goals and then treat eastern Washington as its dumping ground.
Yep.
So knowing that that's really how little Olympia thinks of us.
Right. What, what do you feel like is the proper approach as county commissioner when these, these projects are looking to come into our backyard? Is this a not in my backyard scenario?
No, I think, I think there are appropriate places in the county that it could probably happen. And you have to separate out wind and solar. Those are two separate issues. I said a long time ago, you can put wind, you can put wind towers in rocks, but you can't farm rocks.
That's a good point.
You know, you can put that out in the scab grounds. Now, the solar, you have to separate out because when they do those, they fence off that ground.
Yeah.
And the, the majority of our wildlife is in those scab grounds.
Totally.
And once.
A solar farm, it may as well be a parking lot.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, because they can't have wildlife or livestock rubbing up against their solar panels.
Right.
They'll graze sheep in there, but that's it. They won't allow cattle or goats because goats like to tap dance on everything and they have a way of getting everywhere. But cattle are too big. They move them around. It's, it's not good. But if you start fencing off these big swaths of ground, your, your wildlife has no corridor to move through. We, well, we don't have to the issue of other areas, but we have wolves here. I've had them across from my house within less than a hundred yards of my place. Up in the north part of the county, they got wolves out there. They're, they're losing livestock up there. If you start fencing off these large swaths and you only have these corridors for wildlife, wolves aren't dumb. They're going to hang there and they're going to slaughter everything that comes through there.
On the, on the topic of wind farms particularly, it's, it's been very divisive in our community. People have been very, very vocal. And I, I've been somewhat amused by the inconsistencies on both sides of the aisle, right? Like my, my left-leaning friends who love to talk about how much they love green energy have been pretty quiet on this one. There was a, there was a, some sort of meeting where the Save the Palouse people did, put on a big symposium up at the Schweizer Event Center. I did not see a single member of the local climate group there. But I do know they had a webinar that night about breaching the Snake River dams.
Right.
So there's some, there's some hypocrisy there.
Right, right.
But then on the right-hand side, I'm noticing a lot of my more right-leaning libertarian friends are suddenly very interested in the government telling private property owners what they can and can't build.
Right. Well, two things there. So one of the cool things is with this election process is the Democrat Party put on a couple of candidate forums. And I got to know some of the, some of the Democrat leaders. And when I first started this, I thought this issue was maybe 60% of the people were for, well, were against the windmills and maybe 40%, Pullman's kind of an unknown. I mean, I know a lot of people in Pullman, but I don't hang out in town. I'm not a town guy. I'm not really cut out for town. A little on the feral side for that. But after talking to some of those leaders, you know, they're like, these windmills are dumb. They're not efficient. They're not going to work.
So it's not 60/40. What do you think?
I think it's probably, I don't know if it's. I think it's probably, I don't know if it's like a Seventy-five, twenty-five or seventy, thirty. I think it's more that direction than, than it is more fifty, fifty.
Yeah.
Side of things.
The silence on the part of the clean energy advocates in our town is startling to me. I haven't met anybody who's hardcore in favor.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then to go back to your, your issue of personal property rights, I am in Full support of personal property rights. If you and I are neighbors and, and you want to do something on your property that's not going to affect me. By all means, then do it, you know? Now, if you want to put a drive in theater that butts right up to my house.
You might have something to say.
Can you move it to the other side of the property, please? You know, that's, that's one thing. With these windmills though, they're subsidized by taxpayer dollars. And if, if, if you're going to be subsidized that heavily by taxpayer dollars, taxpayers get a vote in it too.
Yeah. So if, if that's your position, what's stopping you as a commissioner from just putting your foot down and saying, no, we don't want this in our county?
So again, i- if, if people want to do it and do it on their own property and not affect their neighbors. You know, we, we don't um I guess two parts. One is the, I don't want to tell people what they can and can't do. I don't want to be the one picking winners and losers. If you can do it and not affect your neighbors. You know, I, I think it's dumb. But go ahead and be dumb.
Yeah.
That's, that's my opinion on it. I think With the windmills, a lot of it's pretty short sighted. People are seeing dollars and I understand if, if I had a family farm and I was trying to figure out how to save it. You know, it looks pretty good.
Sure, like the land leases.
Yeah, the landowners.
Yeah.
But I think that Whitman County is different than, like if you go down to Columbia County. You see all the windmill projects going up there. All the roads are on top of the hills already. Those hills are long and they have a massive spot on top and they're not affecting farming. Up in, up in Ritzville, same thing. It's fairly flat ground. You can farm around those. They're going to have to have so many roads cut through here. And those, our ground is
Here in Whitman
In Whitman County, yeah. The road systems to all these wind towers are going to have to be cut in. That's going to require a lot of grading. It's going to change the landscape. Our soil, when it gets wet, is not stable.
It's, likes to slide.
Yes, and I have a bad feeling that They're either going to lose way more farm ground than they anticipated because you have to You have to move away from that fill dirt to keep the road in place. Or you're going to see a lot of roads slough off.
Well, it sounds like you have a lot of pragmatic reasons to, to not be in favor of, of this particular um, project. You know, the problem is it is on private property.
Right.
Right? And a lot of people are now saying, well, because of the height, because they're so big, because they're in my view. I should get a say in that.
Right.
What's your take on that? Like, does the county have the right to shut this project down?
Well, so And that, that's, we have zoning ordinances against houses on hilltops.
That's been in place for a while.
Yep, we have zoning ordinances against billboards um, on, you know, on hills for some of the similar reasons. I have a harder time saying just because of the height. I mean, we have, we have cell towers, we have radio towers. You know, it, it does break it up. I don't personally like looking at it because I know from my place, I will see these all day and night and I'll see the flashing lights. I don't particularly enjoy that.
What part of the county do you live in?
Uh, so I live not too far from the landfill.
Okay, like
Yeah, between Pullman and Colfax.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, not too far from that. So I, I have a prob, I don't, I don't enjoy the height thing. I find it interesting that, you know, for years, we've had all these wind towers that are roughly, I think God, where they get about three hundred and fifty feet ish plus or minus. And now all of a sudden, in order to catch good wind and be stable, they gotta go twice that height. Well, maybe you're choosing the wrong spot. You know, so I, I don't, I don't like that. Especially around Cameag Butte. There's a lot of tourism that comes in with, you know, for photography and All that sort of stuff. It, it brings in quite a bit of money, actually. The argument is that, oh, well, people want to take pictures of windmills too. I don't think so. I think you're going to see that it's going to hurt. It's, it's going to hurt that uh, tourism on, on photography end of things. There are um There is, I'm trying to remember the exact name of it. I believe it's the Natural Landmarks. Designation. And we can make ordinances that exclude them for a certain zone or a certain distance out of that. Is, is that reasonable? I, I think it might be. I, you know, it's something we'll have to look at a little bit. I got to do some more reading on and see exactly how that all falls out. Dennis Tracy seems to think, the prosecuting attorney seems to think it's defensible. So if they, if that's the uh, direction the planning commission chooses to go, I would not have a problem following that.
All right. Are you all worried about uh, the state intervening and taking local control away?
I'm not worried at all because I absolutely know they will.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, there's that.
Right. So you know, you have to go back and FSAC is the organization, it's the Electrical Facilities Siding Commission, I believe.
It's basically a, a commission out in Olympia that has the right to overrule local zoning.
Right.
If the state deems that this energy project is critical.
Yep, and originally it was done for the nuclear facilities and then they recently changed it and included green energy into that. So that's how that all came about. FSAC is not completely unreasonable though. The Harv- or not Harvest Hills, the uh Horse Heaven Hills uh, project down by Tri-Cities.
Yeah.
When that came
Massive project.
Massive project. That came in, it went to FSAC and FSAC said, no, we don't like this. You need to cut it in half. And they sided with the citizens. And then it went to our illustrious leader Ensley. And he's like, nope, you're wrong. You need to go back and reconsider that. So that's how it got allowed to have the full
Wow.
Full project, the way that it is. And their answer for, well, it's going to take up the US, well, we'll put a photograph on a billboard so you can see what it used to look like. You know, that, that's
Yeah.
Well, I can't use those words, so. I'll try to be polite here.
This is an issue that is not going to go away.
So I, I guarantee you that if we have any kind of a uh, increase in setback. Any kind of an exclusion area. And I'm not even so sure that um, our decommission policy wouldn't send the current project to FSAC. Now, FSAC There, they are, they have a backlog. Uh, last I heard is two to three years. So who knows how long it's going to take them to actually get through that, but my also, my other understanding is that with enough money, you can get anything done through FSAC. Which is irritating.
Yeah.
But FSAC does look at the um, the ordinance that you have in place. Now, how much stock they put in that, it remains to be seen. The thing that I'm leaning, that I'm okay with FSAC being in charge of this is There's still a lot of unknowns about these wind turbines, you know, long-term effects. I don't know if it's really an issue or not, but I, I think that our science hasn't caught up to where we are. If FSAC says, yes, it's okay, then in the end, the state is now responsible for all the damages that come further down the road. And I'm okay with that. I think we've done the best we can to protect our citizens at that point. We've made our point and um As much as I hate to say it, um, and I believe in ten to fifteen years. Those wind turbines will be coming down because they won't be efficient enough. There'll be other sources of energy that are more efficient. And at that point, we can say, see, I told you so. The downside is all the concrete you have in the ground. That ground will never be farmable again. It's going to grow a ton of vent nada and sheet grass and maybe a few other noxious weeds and that's it. That's the sad part.
Yeah.
But again, we, we've tried our best to protect our citizens. We've made our voices known On what we believe and, and uh, think is best for our county. And they'll do what they want with it after that.
Yeah.
Hopefully FSAC will agree and say, nope, that's not a good place for that project.
Awesome. Well, thank you for sharing. Uh, let's talk a little bit about the unique relationship between the county and the city. Yeah, you know, Whitman County is uh, like a lot of counties, you know, it It's, doesn't use the home rule uh, management structure and all that. We were commissioner based. But we are a little unique in the lopsidedness of the population base. A huge percentage of our voters are in Pullman. And you know, Colfax is the county seat and it's not the largest city in the community.
Right.
What's that like uh, managing the needs of the county that Pullman sits in? But having a different entity, the city of Pullman, like what's the relationship like between Colfax and Pullman?
Yeah, so I mean, realistically The, the role of the county government is to support the entire county. So we have county roads that we need to maintain. We have We don't have water systems, but with the Palouse Basin Aquifer, we do have a responsibility to make sure there's water
Absolutely.
In and around Pullman.
Yeah, another issue that's not going to go away.
Right, yep. So we have some responsibility, but the city of Pullman is its own government. I, I don't have the, I mean, I could go in and tell The mayor that, hey, I think this is, you need to do this, this and this. He doesn't have to listen to me. He, in fact, he could just tell me to take a hike for all, you know, I have no authority there at all.
What kind of relationship do you have with uh, Pullman city officials?
So I, I don't know the mayor at all. I've uh, worked on the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee with Sean Wells, the, the new uh, city administrator. And I've had a few, a couple of different conversations with him about different things. And you know, I, I think it, it's a decent relationship. Um, I think we My opinion is that we listen to each other and, and want to have a dialogue. Pullman is, is, like you said, it's a unique spot because it is the economic driver of the county. It is the largest city within the county. So it does deserve Some special consideration, but it doesn't You can't play favorites at the same time, you know, well, the city wants this, so we have to do that. We have to look out for the county itself. And yes, Pullman is part of that. So you know One of the things that, that I've seen is Business hates chaos. And right now, the political climate is chaos. That's got to get fixed if we're going to get anything done. One of the big topics um, that the county, I guess, is kind of responsible for is the so-called bypass on On Kirkendall Road over to Sand Road and all that. There, we had a vote
Truck route.
Yeah, the truck route is what they're, it's, it's got all kinds of different names. But We had a vote on that here not too long ago to uh, commit funds to a uh A consultant to file for a, a grant for, from the federal government. I voted no against that. The reason why I voted no against that, and even if I thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread, it would answer all our problems, I still would have voted no for it. Simply because I don't like having things sprung on me. It was never sold to the people. It was never sold to the commissioners. And it, what, they didn't talk to the people before they just said, surprise, we're doing this. And it was the worst timing possible. Right now, we're, you know, we got budget problems. Everybody knows that. Welsh Comer just came off a disastrous project in downtown Pullman and they're, they're the consultant that Moscow uses. And they may be fine. You know, I, I've heard different things. Um, one of them is that You know, they only did what they were directed to by the city of Pullman and so that was part of the problems. Maybe, maybe not. Perception still stands. It was a disaster. Nobody wants them there. Why did we go ahead and agree to that? The, and then the agreement is just between Whitman County and the city of Moscow. There's a whole stretch of road to Leittau County in there that I never heard whether or not they're serious about straightening that road out to actually make it an effective road or not.
Is it inside the, the Moscow state limits?
No, there's, there's about uh, maybe a mile-ish. Uh, and one bridge that has to be replaced in Leittau County before you get to the city of Moscow. And in that, there are two ninety degree corners that are not wide enough for a semi and a vehicle to pass currently.
Hence the widening and reengineering.
Yep, yep. So the Leittau County and Moscow need to do some work. Pullman would also need to do some work. The other issue that I had was that, that, you know We were supposed to talk to the major landowners out there, which is primarily uh, Norm Druffel and Sons. And that never happened. Excuse me, never happened. I made a phone call that morning when I saw it on the, I don't try not to call people on weekends, so I saw that it was on the, the order on, on Saturday, so I Monday morning, I called uh, Kurt Druffel and he and I had a conversation about it. And, and I asked him, because I wanted to know from him specifically. Did anybody contact? No. Nobody contacted him.
Okay, I have to do something unusual here and interrupt the interview briefly. As most of you know, my company has done work for Welsh Comer over the last few years, including working on the RTPO project that Chad and I are discussing. And when he made his claim about a particular individual not even being contacted. I knew that wasn't true. And so I checked. I actually went and looked at the logs and sure enough. This particular individual signed up for our mailing list the day after our open house. He received several emails. He opened them, he read them. But more importantly, I was able to contact my counterpart, the public engagement team, and ask if there had been any interactions. And they showed me screenshots of several text conversations that happened about this project. So no, it is not true that such a significant Landowner and farming operation was excluded from this process. I did have a follow-up conversation with Chad about it. He was very gracious. After a little bit of back and forth, we realized that what he meant to say was that this particular individual Had wished he was more actively involved in any conversation about land acquisition, you know, property rights, eminent domain, that kind of thing. The Kirkendall Sand Road Truck Route is years away from any property acquisition and it'd be way too early to talk about eminent domain. In fact, it would be inappropriate to approach a landowner and talk about things like right of ways and, and land swamps. So please keep that context in mind. Now back to the interview.
So all these things were not in place um, to happen for me to, to support this idea. I don't know right now. I, I honestly don't know if there's even money in the federal government for this project. I've got a bad feeling this is going to be thirty thousand dollars down the drain that we could have used elsewhere. You know, again, is it a good idea or not? You know, probably just from the normal usage of that road currently, because people are already using it as a bypass. You know, especially with the downtown project. Um, I know that's, after that started. I don't go through Pullman much anymore if I can avoid it. It's just too much of a pain for me. So yeah, when the weather was good, I took that road a lot. The gravel road is degrading and paving it would probably be a, a good Is the best solution for that. There's still a lot of challenges that weren't worked out before they started down that process, down that road.
So it sounds like you actually see the merits of that particular plan.
Right.
But you're, is, I, I'm picking up like you're a little offended At some of the parties involved.
Yeah, just, just the way that it was presented. It was kind of a surprise that all of a sudden, oh, we're doing this. There'd been some discussion on it, but nothing concrete. And then they wanted to vote on, on, you know, funding this um, consultant. And again
Consultant engineer.
Yes, yes. Well, so the consultant is to write the grant
Correct.
To the federal government. And so that's, that's, it's only the grant. It's not actually anything engineering the road or anything like that.
It's a very early in the process. Like this is not deciding whether or not to do it.
Right.
It's deciding whether or not we want to go to the effort To do the, the research to find out if we should pursue it. Like it's, it's very early.
Yeah, well, it's a little bit beyond that. Um, so it's actually A grant, it's to write a grant to the federal government to get the funding to do the project.
Which would require the engineering.
The engineering and everything else.
Which hasn't been done yet.
Right, yep.
So there's a lot of discovery that would happen in the engineering.
Correct.
Right, but that, that hasn't been done. This is to get the grant to see if we want to pursue that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, it isn't, it, it wasn't a vote of whether or not to do it, although A no vote would essentially, essentially scubble the whole.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. You know, so like I said, I was
Like I said, you, you, you made some comments about how you actually see the merit in the project, but it sounds like there's some personal offense there.
Right, yeah, yeah. It just wasn't presented. And I think any, any project that the government does before they go into it, they got to sell it to the people.
Yeah.
You know, you can't just show up and go, you know, we're, we're going to build this stadium here. Have fun with it.
All right, right.
You gotta say, hey, we want to put the stadium and this is why we want to do it. This is the money it's going to bring in. This is the projects we can do to, do with it. This is how it's going to help the community and this is how we're going to improve our road systems to make sure it functions properly.
So um, Palouse RTPO is an independent Agency of sorts. It basically exists to help mediate these conversations That involve multiple entities, in this case, the county, the cities, and working with, with people in Idaho. This isn't a city of Pullman issue, right? This is RTPO. And you know, I, I did get to be a little bit a part of that process. And I'm curious, did you ever read the RTPO report that came out before this grant proposal was put out?
Yeah, I got through a lot of that. Um, not all of it. Trying to read it in parts and pieces, just, you know, to sit down, for me to sit down and read something like that, I'll retain nothing.
Well, there's an executive summary.
Yeah.
There's a short version, there's a website. There was some pretty substantial public outreach that happened and there was a lot of Druffles on that list.
Right.
Did, did you have a chance to review any of that? Did, did you have a chance to review any of that?
Yes, so, and yes, there are a lot of Druffles on there, but no, they weren't contacted specifically, and no, they weren't necessarily in support of the project either.
Yeah.
And that's one of the problems that, that they had when I was talking with Kurt.
So just to interrupt you, I, I, my role in there, that I actually got to be a part of the public comment on that.
Right.
And what we learned was 201, everyone was in favor of the bypass route on the opposite side of town that they lived on.
Right.
So if you're south of Pullman, you're really excited about Albion Road.
Right.
If you're north of town, you think that Kirkendall is great, right? It's very natural for someone on the south end of town to be against it. That is not surprising.
Right.
But RTPO, their job was to find a practical solution that was based on data, and that included a lot of data collection. I'm curious if you had a chance to go over that information.
Some of it. Like I said, I, and trying to remember all of it at this moment is, I don't, I couldn't tell you specifics at this moment.
Sure.
But yeah, I did get to read some of that, through some of that stuff. You know, that like the Albion project, I think that was, that's not really feasible. Because the way that you come in and the road, yes, you can drive a truck down it. It's not the greatest road. There's a pretty steep grade in the winter time. That's not going to be fun. You've got the railroad tracks you need to contend with. You're coming through town.
Well, the biggest issue there is trucks are already using Albion Road.
Right.
But it's not up to code.
Yeah.
The, the, the bridge has a weight limit that we're a little bit concerned about.
Right, yes. And, yeah, there's some other issues I've discovered with, with some of those things too, with the, with the weight limits. So I didn't think that was really the most feasible route. And a lot of people keep saying the old, was it 276, I think was.
The ethical northern bypass.
Yeah, yes, exactly. And, and that one is, it'll never happen for a lot of reasons.
It'll be very expensive.
Right.
It could happen, but not anytime.
Well, WSU built buildings right in the middle of the right-of-way.
I'm not sure that's true, but we did, we, we did build a runway in the middle of the old right-of-way.
And then the, oh gosh, ARU, where they do all the animal research, they have several buildings out there that is, if I remember correctly, is in the middle of the right-of-way.
That, that right-of-way was vacated and sold to the university many decades ago.
Yeah, so there goes.
I think, I think during like the Ford administration.
Right. So there goes part of the right-of-way for that. It's been kind of chunked away at overtime.
The eastern end of it has been.
Yeah.
But, but there is a path through a domain where it could be connected to Terre, Terreview.
Terreview, yeah, but then what do you do? Now you got to go through apartment land and, you know.
No, it would, it would tie to Terreview near where the current junction of Airport Road is.
Oh, over there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, still, it would bypass apartment.
Yeah, you still have a lot of issues on getting through there.
It's, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying the northern bypass isn't going to happen anytime soon.
Right, right.
But it is technically still possible if the federal funding were to come, which we both know.
Right, it's not like. And the state is looking at turning that back to the county, and the county does not have the funds to, to maintain that right-of-way. So it's, it's kind of a weird process.
No, and, and there's a lot of misinformation about the northern bypass.
Yeah.
It is, that one's still there.
That one's not going to happen. Bishop Boulevard originally was, was the bypass. And it worked out great right up until they put a stoplight in the middle of the hill and banked the hill. Well, okay, it didn't work out great because they banked the hill the wrong way originally. That's why trucks flop over periodically going down that. You can't, you can't bank a hill to the outside. That was a poor design. And then you put a stoplight in the middle of it, and when you're loaded at 100,000 pounds, truckers don't like to stop in the middle of a hill and try to get going again.
Right.
So that's a problem. I don't think that there's any one solution to this. I think it's going to be a combination of a bunch of things. I think they've, they've got to improve Bishop Boulevard, because look at the reality of it. We now have Amazon on, on 270. We have Motley and Motley. We have Premix, and we have Poe Asphalt. I think that's all the major.
Atlas.
Oh, Atlas, yeah. Those are all trucking companies. They have no choice but to come through Pullman or Moscow. They're not going to.
Depending on their destination.
Yeah, depending on which way they're going, they've got to go through one of those towns to get to where they're going. You're not going to eliminate those trucks. The, like the Food Service on America, the other trucks that are delivering to Pullman and then going to Moscow, they're not going to go south and go through town. They're going to go, you know, go out, out of town and back around to the south end. They're going to go doubt 270. So you're not going to, you're not going to eliminate those trucks. So where do you want them to go? That's what Pullman has to figure out is how to, how to get those trucks. If they want them out of downtown, how can they do that within the city too?
So some, something that I'm noticing here, because again, I did work on the RTPO report, what you're describing.
Yeah.
Almost completely lines up with what the report says.
Exactly.
But it doesn't sound like you knew that or read that.
No, some of that I knew. I mean.
Like they're, like they did a lot of data. The report shows that at most, you could remove 50% of the truck traffic in downtown Pullman, because the other 50% is using downtown as the destination.
Right.
Right, you know, it's deliveries, that kind of.
And I guess the confusion comes in reading that report and then what everybody's understanding of it is.
Sure.
Everyone thinks that, oh, this is going to get rid of all the truck traffic, you know, if, if you do the.
But the report specifically said it won't do that.
And that's, that's, but that's the impression that people get is that we, we want truck traffic out of town. We're going to do this truck route south of Pullman and into Moscow, so we can get rid of it. It's, it's not going to. And that's why Pullman has to, you know, there's several factors to this that the report did say, and, and we got to work on.
Okay.
That's just kind of where it's at.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little taken aback at how personal this sounds.
I just, you know, I guess I, when things come up like this, it, it's something that's, that's important. We got to take care of it. And you can't push it off onto any one person. It's, it's going to be a team effort between the city and the county.
Yeah.
To get this taken care of and to try to, I, I don't, I'm not saying that the city is pushing it off on anybody, but the impression you get if you read comments online and hear opinions is that the county's going to take care of it, and that's not true. It has to be a coordinated effort on, on all sides.
I've never heard anybody push it off on the county. I, I would say that RTPO's function is to mediate exactly what you're talking about.
And, and I'm not saying RTPO. When you, when you read just the public comments and that sort of thing, there's, people are very, like you said, nobody wants it on their side of town.
Right.
It's kind of that, kind of an attitude. And, and I guess probably my frustration in some of this is, it's not just this issue. You know, you look at the wind, you look at that issue, the roads issue, and several others. And, and people kind of get in their head, sometimes, I guess, what people think. I mean, even on the wind issue, I've seen tons of comments that say, well, if you want wind power, vote for Chad. I'm not for it. You can believe what you want, and I've put out information that disputes that, but I'm not going to argue with those people. It's a waste of my time. It's a waste of everybody's time. I'm not, if you want to believe that, go ahead. I, I can't, I can't fight it. So I'll put out the truth, and if you don't like it, that's entirely for you to decide. So yeah, I do get a little frustrated with it sometimes. You know, online's kind of a, the social media is a weird place. People get some weird ideas on what's going on. And it, it does get a little frustrating some days, like, no, that was never a consideration. Or where did this come from? But there you go, you know, we just keep plugging along and moving on.
Yeah. I understand that you're more of a, a, a country guy versus a town guy.
Right.
Right, but you know, this is all roads lead to Pullman.
Yes.
Pullman is the biggest, you know. What do you like about Pullman? Because I, I can't say I've heard anything.
What do I like about?
I haven't already said anything positive about Pullman yet.
Pullman, well, no, Pullman has a lot of, has a lot of things going for it. My daughter went to Pullman High School and I absolutely loved it.
Awesome.
The, you know, the school needs some work. The school district wasn't for her. It's just her type of personality. She's a very hands-on kind of kid. It wasn't great for her, but she did learn a lot of things. There were some great teachers there too. But just the environment. So when she was young and she was doing the Cougar Kids camps and stuff like that, I had a, a college buddy of mine come back. He, he was on the East Coast and he came out to visit for a while. And I went to pick her up, and she came out and she ran down the sidewalk, you know, we're probably what, 50, 60 yards from the pickup. And she's just trucking on ahead. He's like, man, you'd never do that where I'm from. You'd never let your kid do that. You know, it wasn't safe. I don't worry about that in Pullman. You know, you can, you can go any of the festivals and stuff like that. You can, you can have your kids around. It's not, and yeah, the college kids sometimes get a little rowdy and stuff, but they're pretty darn respectful all in all. And most of the time, they, you know, when they are having a large party or a big function, they're kind of in their own area. You know, one of the things that I remember, oh gosh, it was, I'm trying to remember if it's during COVID. It was when they closed the, the dams down because they had too many kids over at Ilya Dunes.
Oh, sure. The dam crossing.
Yep, they closed the dam crossing, sorry, yeah. So most of the kids ended up down at Boyer Park. And I wasn't down there, but I talked with some, a lot of people that were down there, and they said it was really cool to see because on one side, they kind of let, that's where all the families were. Then you had the kids that were kind of, you know, they're having a good time, but not too rowdy. And then on the far end, you have the rowdier group, and they just kind of naturally spaced themselves out and allowed each other to do their thing and, and not cause problems for each other. So things like that. You know, WSU is, is, it's a great place. When I went to school there, I loved it. It was, we had some fantastic professors. WSU had a lot of cutting-edge technology, a lot of interesting things. The animal science department was still pretty darn strong. The vet school was great. It's kind of fallen off. It's having some problems these days. I think there's a lot of factors in that, and I think some of it starts at the very top. I mean, the Borja regions, none of them live in eastern Washington. None of them know, other than if they picked it out on a map. And that influences the way things go. We're a land-grant university, and the majority of the people don't know what a land-grant university is. You know, and that's, that's unfortunate. I also recognize, I'm not a big football fan. I enjoy seeing the Cougars do well. I don't, I don't follow many sports, honestly. It's just not, I don't have a lot of time for that. But like I said, I enjoy watch, seeing that they've done well, because I know that it's going to bring people in. It's going to bring tax dollars and sales tax in, in hotels, you know, all the stuff that it brings. Is it a little bit of a pain when you're like, oh my God, I need to go to the grocery store? I'm waiting till Monday, you know? Or wait till the football game starts, then I can go to town. It's a challenge, yes, but you know, I do love that the, the people that come to Pullman and enjoy call it home. You know, and some of them haven't lived here in years, and this is still where they consider home. So.
What, what, what do you think needs to be done, or what, what do you hope to do to improve that county versus city relationship? I'm not just talking about the governmental level.
Right, right.
You've expressed some, some sentiments to me that make me go, oh wow, this, you know, there, there's a divide here.
Right.
What can we do to help bridge that?
There is a tough, you know, it, it's kind of tough because living in the county, there's kind of this impression that, you know, people can go out and do whatever they want because nobody owns that land. It's all owned.
Oh, yeah.
Own that. I mean, you watch some of these photographers walking through crops. You know, it's, there's, and, and not the, a lot of the tourists, I say, are probably okay. You know, I've seen some, there's been some incidents and unfortunate things. But you know, even like senior photos that, you know, people are just walking through somebody's land and they don't know who owns it.
Yeah.
And so that's unfortunate. But really, we need to kind of get to the point where everybody understands kind of the ag side of this and accept that in town. Agriculture's been pushed out of Pullman pretty hard, and, and rightfully so to some degree.
Agriculture's been pushed out of like, what do you mean?
So like, there used to be, Police Producers was an old fertilizer company. They were in Pullman for years and years. They got bought, moved out.
Still around?
No, Wilberell's bought them out years ago. McGregor's used to be, they're still on the edge of town, but they used to be more in town. Those things do need to be moved out. You, you don't want that because of the trucks and all that stuff. You don't want them right in downtown.
So they're forced out of town.
Yeah, yeah, but as town grew, they just kind of had to move out. But understanding that, you know, yeah, there's, there's, there's still agriculture here, and that's still a huge part of our economy. And, and that things kind of sometimes ebb and flow with the, with the ag economy right now. In, in grains, crops are tough, you know? There's, there's a lot of issues there, but just to know that that agriculture is part of it. The other issue, my daughter was in high school, junior high and high school rodeo. You drive into any other town in eastern Washington, and when you drive in, you know who the high school is. You drive into this town, is there a high school?
Geography plays into, plays into that.
But there's no sign anywhere that says home of the Pullman Greyhounds.
Really?
I haven't, not on the edge of town. I mean, I don't look that closely anymore. We have a great big, huge WSU welcome site.
Greyhound boosters. You have a new project you need to do. Let's get a sign up.
You know, and, and that was one thing that always kind of, kind of made her sad. You know, when you're, when you're looking at these things, it's like, man, every other town supports their high school so much. And it's not to say that Pullman doesn't support it, but the university overshadows it so much that, you know.
So you, you share some more reasons that you're not a fan of Pullman. What can be done to close that?
That's, that's what we can do. You know, we can work on, you know, acknowledging and having some of the, the support for the community, for the Pullman, the local community, not just the university. We can work on, you know, the, integrating some of the university students. And that's, that's something that we've had a problem with is, you know, that they know Pullman, but they never really get a chance to know anything outside of that. Some of them do. Some of them that work really hard, you know? I was one of them. I never left, when I came here to WSU, I never left. I spent every summer here. I worked. I sometimes did summer classes, but, you know, I had a summertime job working for the Whitman County Weed Board. That's how I got to know where Moldham is.
Yeah.
You know, originally, and know that they used to have a train yard. That was massive. You know, so figuring out a way to kind of integrate all those, getting the, the students to understand a little bit more about Whitman County, and then promoting our high school, promoting the, we got to get back to being a friendly area. I'm not saying we're completely unfriendly, but it used to be better. I've heard complaints from some of the business owners, even on the business side of things. It's kind of somewhat everybody for themselves. It just needs to be improved. Get that local feeling back, and how do you do that?
So what do you, what do you personally want to be able to do as a county commissioner to help bridge that divide between county and city?
Yeah, you know, I think, I know they have Lentle Festival, and, and that's a great thing. How do you get more, more, I guess, community events like that without blocking up all of town? Pullman, in Pullman in particular.
Are you talking about traffic?
Yeah, and that's a problem, because like Lentle Festival, they have to block off the highway, or at least last time I was on it, they went through downtown and ended at Rainy Park. And, and that is a problem. Don't get me wrong. I don't know if they still do it that way, because it's been a long time since.
No, they do. So you don't like Lentle Festival because.
No, I do like Lentle Festival.
Blocks the highway?
No, how, how can we figure out to do more things without causing problems in, in Pullman? You know, blocking off the roadway is fine for a period of time, but you don't want to do that every time. How do you?
Once a year for like two hours.
Right, that's, that's okay. Like, even like the farmer's market, you know, it used to be, it used to be a little bit bigger. It's kind of relocated. They've had some issues trying to get that going. How do we improve that? And have access, you know? Parking is always an issue. You want to have things near downtown, and I get that, but parking is also a big issue and, and getting through things is, how do we, how do we solve that problem? And I don't have a good solution for that right now. You know, we were just discussing this the other night of, you know, how, some of these towns have multiple festivals a year. And how can Pullman kind of capitalize on that, integrate the students and the local population?
Yeah.
The question is, where do you do that? I guess in my mind, and that's why I was kind of bringing up Lentle Festival is it's, it's a good thing to do, and I, and I appreciate it and enjoy it. But you don't want to, you don't want to cause problems either for, you know, getting people through and where they want to be. I guess that, that's the, what I'm wrestling with in my mind.
Yeah.
And with the current layout, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to do that.
What do you mean the current layout?
Well, you have, to get through town, you have Main and you have Paradise. There's no other side streets for traffic to go around. You're going to go clear around town one way or the other. So is that, is it going to work to do those, to shut down the road a couple of times a year, you know, an extra time or two, or not? And I don't know. That's a, that's something I'd have to talk with people in Pullman and see if that's something they're in favor of.
Well, you, you bring up an interesting point, because you can design a road for capacity, or you can design it for pedestrians, but you can't do both at the same time.
Yeah.
And the community of Pullman specifically hired Welsh Comer.
Right.
To redesign downtown to be more pedestrian-friendly, which means that comes at the expense of getting through.
Yes.
You've commented on the lack of parking in Pullman.
Right.
Um, we did the math, there's plenty of parking in Pullman. It may not be as convenient that you may not be able to park directly in front of the building, but there's.
I am a fan of walking.
Plenty of parking, yeah.
I don't mind the walking part.
But but like, it sounds like the things that you don't like about Pullman are because you can't drive through it quickly. And I hate to say it, that's, that's the point. We're, we're trying, right, we're trying to make it less convenient to drive downtown so that people use it more as a destination.
Right.
Rather than to drive through.
Right, well, it depends on what you're doing at the time, you know, when you're, when you're working, you need to be able to get through something. And when there's a function going on, you don't mind parking. I drive a large pickup, and it doesn't park well anywhere.
Yeah.
Um, when I go.
There's probably no configuration in downtown Pullman that would work for where you.
And I don't mind the walk because usually, at least until recently, when I go places, when I'm shoeing horses, I usually have a dog with me. I don't want him bothered. I park him in the farthest part of the parking lot and I walk. Um, it's a big park pickup. It's hard to get in and out, so I just take the walk. I don't mind that part. Um, but, you know, how do you, you know, how do you integrate that? And, you know, parallel parking is tough on the, on city streets. Um, sometimes it works, it just depends on time of day.
Well, it it's, it's mostly a function of how big of a car you're driving.
Yes, exactly.
I've seen your pickup. I can understand why you don't like fellow parks.
So like, um, you know, we had, we had some functions, uh, campaign functions at Pups and Cups downtown.
Yeah.
And I parked, well, I got lucky and I found a couple of good parking spots, but I don't mind parking a couple blocks, three blocks away, whatever. Uh, if a bank's closed and use that parking lot and walk the three or four blocks. It doesn't hurt my feelings at all. Um, but when you get some of these bigger events, you know, Lental Festival is, it's fun, but it's where, where are you gonna park to find a spot? And that's always a challenge.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, how do, how do you get those things integrated, I guess? That's my.
Yeah.
Um, biggest question. Uh, and and from the the county standpoint, it's it's not just Pullman. How do we, um, how do we support the smaller towns, the the LaCrosse's, the Tico's, the LeMans? Um, you know, what do we need to do to help them? What kind of regulations can we try to minimize?
Yeah.
I'm a, I I don't like excessive regulation. How how do we make it easier for things like that to happen?
Yeah.
Um, I, and that's, to me, that's more the county's responsibility. We gotta work with the cities and Pullman in particular. But the city's gonna do what they're gonna do. That's, that's not our, that's not our lane.
Yeah.
Um, work with them, help them, support them. If we see things coming up, hey, um, you know, this might be an issue. Um, not to harp on it, but to go back to the wind code, when I was the planning chair, I asked, do we want to give an exclusion zone around the cities and towns? Do we want, you know, do we want to make it so like Pullman can grow or not? Um, at the time, the commissioners didn't really seem to be interested in that. You know, I don't want to see Pullman boxed in in some fashion. It's, Pullman is a challenge because of the topography.
A lot of it.
We got the four hills. There's only so much space between the crick and the next hill on how you get traffic through. It it's just a challenge. Um, and it's gonna take some really creative people, and I think there are some coming up now that um, can put their heads together and 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 really have a vision for Pullman, how they want to see it grow, uh, and and change. But, um, you know, how do we, how do we support these things, uh, for all the towns?
Yeah. Well, as we, as we wrap up here, what is your vision for Whitman County? What what do you think Whitman County, how does Whitman County need to change? And what does Whitman County look like in ten, twenty years?
Right. I think, um, I think there's several factors in Whitman County that that kind of need to be looked at. We talked, we talked about energy. We touched on the water issue with the police in Pullman, the police base in Aquifer. Um, and that committee is doing a great job right now of of looking forward and how they're gonna support that, uh, aquifer. Um, energy is the next one. Uh, I think we've got to do, the county needs to be uh, proactive in creating an energy policy that encourages the efficient and and cheap energy sources. Um, if you don't have energy, we're not gonna be able to have industry. Uh, if you don't have water, it's gonna die. Um, so we gotta look forward to those things and create policies that will will spur those areas. Um, Whitman County, I think in general, um, the, working with the towns, um, and getting the the ag and the towns integrated a little better and and not so much that, just so everybody's supporting each other and sees the benefit of of what they're doing and and have that friendly attitude of, hey, welcome to our area, and please make this your home.
Well, if I can draw that out a little bit more, you said repeatedly, Pullman's gonna do what Pullman's gonna do.
Right.
And and you you've made some comments that make me think you don't think particularly well of the, what what can we do to help bridge that?
Right.
How can Whitman County move forward so that we don't have this standoffishness between county and?
Yeah, you know, and and that's just gonna be conversations and talking with people, you know, in this, in this process, it's been interesting because the commissioner election is out of cycle. Um, and so we have a whole bunch of city council people that are running, and I've gotten to know a lot of them. Uh, and and that's been interesting to talk to them and see what their thoughts are, and how can we work together to to improve Pullman and the county at the same time? Um, granted, we gotta, we're gonna be doing it separately because Pullman's not gonna tell the county government how to run, and the county's not gonna tell Pullman, you know, you're, you know, you gotta do this, or you can't do that, or whatever. Um, we gotta work together and come up with policies that are gonna be, uh, long-term sustainable and create a place that people want to live uh, and draw those people in.
Yeah. Well, I I look forward to seeing how that plays out.
Also work with the state.
For for sure. That's all, we could do an hour just on that.
Right.
Is there, is there anything else you would like the people Whitman County to know before we wrap up?
Um, no, I I've appreciated this, this, uh, it's been a very interesting ride, um, you know, going from appointment to election. Um, and, uh, you know, I I hope that I get elected this year. Uh, the, and if I do, then I get to get, get to run again next year because the term expires next year, so then I run for a four-year term. Um, but I guess in general, just encourage everyone to get involved. Um, and it doesn't have to be in government. There's all kinds of different, uh, associations and groups. Uh, and just start creating that, uh, community. I think that's really what we need to improve on. Um, you know, to to make this county function properly.
Awesome. Well, Chad, thank you so much for taking the time.
You're welcome. Thank you.